Hmm? Turn them on. Turn them on.
No, I say we still nothing.
Oh, I don't know, I didn't talk to the people. I just got back in town.
Okay.
Trying to put out other fires.
What's what other fires?
Oh, you can name it ahead. Boy, he turned over raw moles. Breaking windows of a truck.
And, uh, Mr. Earl Cole wants to make that agenda until he can address the bids for, uh, that he received today. Second. I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown. Any objections?
Counsel, just to be clear, we need a unanimous vote for this, and the reason for the amendment, is that because bids came in today? We, the, the reason for amending it, uh, so you can consider it now, because if not, then it would be a whole nother month before you could consider the bids. We just want to put that on the record as a law.
Okay, and I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown. Any objections here enough?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
So you want to make that?
Forty.
Four eight?
Uh, we can make it, uh...
Yeah. You want to make it further down?
Let's do it further down, let's make that, uh...
Six eight?
Let's do five eight.
Five eight?
I think. All right. Agenda four. Approve of the amendments at the regular meeting of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Make the motion to approve the amendments.
Second. I got a motion by Councilman Lady Gordon, second by Councilman Brown. Any objections? Here enough? Agenda five. Public comments. Comments from the public or a lot in the calls with the weekend advice catch at forty-two colon eleven. Section two to thirty-four, and so it is very, it's a general item to be considered during the meeting. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. Agenda five eight. Discuss the bid proposal for the wastewater treatment plant, implement pump station, electrical modifications. Um, Mr. Tony, your call.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. And, uh, I, just to let y'all know, I did plan to obviously have this bid, uh, prior to your committee meeting, but we didn't have any bidders, so I had to push it two weeks to get people to bid. But we did get, collect bids today, we got two bids, and they were pretty good bids, they were very close. Uh, the low bid was McLeod Electric, uh, with three hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred fifty-eight, and the next, uh, uh, group was Sphinx Construction at four hundred thousand, so you were, they were pretty tight right there. We know both contractors and, uh, McLeod will do us a good job. This is, uh, part of that, uh, ARPA money that we're gonna improve the, uh, the airflow pump station, the electrical, in particular, the control panel, and also make provisions for, uh, replacing some, uh, the pump motors and, uh, an automatic transfer switch for when y'all do the, uh, overall generator contract. So I, I, uh, recommend that y'all award it, and obviously awarding it will allow us to, uh, get the stuff ordered quickly, or quicker, thirty days quicker, so. Any questions, y'all?
Move.
I see.
I got most, this is the ward team, Brown?
McLeod.
I got a, uh, motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Gordon. Any objections? Here enough?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Agenda six. Consider planning Enzo's commission recommendation to approve the final plat of the first filing of the Westview Crossing subdivision consisting of lots one through seventy-six. Is it Tatum or Mr.?
Yes, sir, we're here, uh, both to address this. I'll be glad to set up those displays if you, if you have any questions. Unfortunately, I'm a little bit late getting here, didn't get my easel set up, but if, uh, if we need them out, I've got them right here, but I'm Jim Tatum with Tatum Engineering, and Dennis Corlins with Westview Development, uh, Westview Crossing Development, and, uh, this is, of course, just a follow-up to what took place at the committee meeting last week regarding the, uh, request for a conditional approval of the final plat, which unfortunately we've got rain again today, and this is just, uh, has slowed us down a lot more than we had hoped and anticipated, but we're just trying to get our administrative matters in order, and, uh, again, when the, all works complete, inspections are made, the reports are filed, acceptance has been acknowledged, and the full bonding process is completed, then we would ask for the signature on the final plat, and not before, and so I think everybody's, uh, protected in the right sort of way, and so, uh, with that explanation, hopefully, you know, I can, I can, I'll be glad to answer any questions, Dennis will answer any questions that you may have, and, uh, but ask for your approval tonight for, based on the conditions that we satisfy, all requirements, that when the day gets here, that we get all these paths completed, that we can, uh, promptly get the signature that, from the planning commissioner, from the mayor's office, and work towards filing the plat. So, again, this is primarily an administrative-type request, and, uh, I hope something, this is something that you can, uh, support and do it tonight.
And, Mr. Tatum, is there gonna be any changes to the plat, the plat?
Not of any significance, there may be a drafting error or something like that that we catch before we file it, but all the lots are consistent with what we represented on the preliminary plat, all the improvements will be in place, the streets, the utilities, sanitary sewer, storm drainage, and so forth.
And so we're understanding correctly, you're saying there's other steps that you have to take between now and before you're actually ready for the signature on the final plat? Uh, the, the final plat itself should not change unless there's some kind of mistake?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're just asking the council to go ahead and give the mayor authority based on the final plat that y'all already presented, giving him authority to sign once those other documents that aren't really
Right.
necessary for the plat?
At the correct time, not before, but at the correct time, and, uh, knowing that we, uh, we would want to come, well, we did come before the planning commission, and then the committee, and now the full council, uh, we're just trying to get our plan ahead here a little bit.
And I, I...
And of course, there's, let me add this, if there's a, uh, some impediment that prevents us from being able to do it, it's, it's very simple, the mayor doesn't sign, and we're not done, so. We're gonna make sure everybody's taken care of, we just wanted to make sure it was approved by the planning commission and this body, so when the day arrives, we're ready together.
And, and the point of that is that, so if the day arrives and it's the twentieth of the month, you don't have to wait for the next council meeting?
Correct.
Correct.
I have also brought by a copy of the first draft of the, uh, decree of covenants of the project. We cannot record these until the final plat is recorded. So we've gone through two drafts, we're going to do our third right now, I brought your copy to read through, um, I think it's calling for thirteen hundred and fifty square feet to be the minimum square footage, finished square footage of any houses in there, so it'll probably be a thousand, like the restrictions are, it'll be that, and it's raining off itself as far as what you do. If you have any questions on that, feel free to call me, if you have any insights you'd like on that, call me also, because then we record the plat, and stuff will be subtitled as, and I'll bring y'all by what I said, copy, and once we do get to that point, that what y'all have, that, that fulfills the promises that I've made y'all when we start this project.
Is that one to seventy-six or seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven. That's correct, and the, the, the two commercial tracks in the front, that where the main road goes there, there's a lot on either side that, uh, was zoned commercial and went through the rezoning process, and there's no plans at this point for a specific user, just anticipated being at the front of the subdivision on the state route where the primary interest of the subdivision has been built, that, that was not really suitable for single-family residential use, and it'll end up being some type of commercial or business use, could be a doctor's office, or a dentist's office, or a, an attorney's office, or CPA, that sort of thing. We don't anticipate any type of, of heavy retail, because a lot's not big enough, a lot's not big enough, they're, they're more suitable maybe for a daycare center, but, uh, that would be an ideal use for that daycare center up there, folks leaving in the morning, zip in, drop junior off, and keep going. No, we'll do lots of them, still a bill about seeing if this project can be approved for, with, with, still, how, with the, with the house to get there, though, a little traffic.
When developers come in, I think it'd be a nice thing that they have some that become, you know, for the community, I know, uh, what Tom's about, the magnitude center daycare, that's good, I, you know, I see that.
You know, a good operator? Be a good daycare operator, be a, be a good sergeant. As soon as we have a date, when we have our bidding, we'll get y'all all sorts of literature and stuff, so that's what, I can't get that until we're close to the date to complete, which is not far off with the regular stuff, and we're very, very close. Right, you know? That's correct. That's correct. We're basically down to finalizing the foundation for the road, getting the asphalt on top of it, and then really just cleanup after that. Street signs, some striping, that sort of thing. Yeah, street lights, that sort of thing. It's, it's closing, it, it, as you, as you well know, the, uh, they've just been getting killed, absolutely killed in Detroit. Every time I look at the radar, it's like there's one red dot, and it's on Court Street.
But, you know, I speak on behalf of the people of West Palm, just don't forget, they're ready for their construction to get up, or they, they say they have this, like, uh, private city.
You're flattered about the, the waterline of current West Palm, we've got a deficient toll, and we've got approval now, right? We have approval, and there's a, one modification to it, we'll substitute P pipe, uh, PVC pipe. I spoke to, uh, let's see, Montrell, to Senator McCord in the ordinance office, he's on vacation this week, went to Biloxi, and, uh, uh, he'll be back next week, we'll have that approval, and then by then we can make the final installation, so hopefully, that will all be done, cleaned up within the next thirty days.
All right. Any other?
Yeah, price, uh, we got a lot of, a lot of concern outraged, I mean, it was social media outraged by the most recent of the region, so I know you said lumber went up, but it hasn't went up in the past thirty days, sixty days, twenty days.
The fact it's cut down in the past thirty days.
So any price range, y'all know at one time y'all saying one seven bid, if I still act critical?
I, I've had a request of DSLD, so they set the price out there, uh, and I didn't get an answer, but I will press that and get to the basis, see what you set, how play into prices, suppose the price ranges we hope to be starting at? Because what they did bet on price, if they don't, it's caused of how the venture of construction and changing the prices, they ran the house up, had to shoot it off before they do put a price on it. Because lumber can jump up fifteen to twenty thousand dollars more on a single house just during the final construction. With twenty thousand dollars jumping up, if they are, it's kind of hard to say, what am I selling this for? So they take the stupid thing most of the hell to just try to deliver a product, it's something they can live with it, but right now, they've gone to all their houses that way. Uh, they, they travel up, they get to that point, there's no offering for sales, but they do not sell pre-sale right now because of the volatility of the price of that, and supplies, we just give you wins at doors.
Houses, housing's a big problem.
Yeah. Everything's a shortage of supply, I've never, I've built houses since I was twelve years old, it's over fifty years, I've never seen these emissions, and I'm glad I'm not building houses right now. The guy next door, they built his house, just finished it, his lumber increased sixty thousand dollars on his house, from the time he started to the time he moved in. It is a very big contract, so. Bear with us, I will, I will live with him, uh, phone tomorrow, and I'll send the meeting to see what I can get y'all the pricing in the four layers, and there you go. I'll get whatever I get out of it.
My, my concern has always been the vehicular traffic going in and out, and, uh, you're looking at seventy-six plots right now, okay, so theoretically, that's about a hundred and fifty-two vehicles, and I know that you're not gonna be allowed to take ten years to build a whole thing out, probably something like that, but I know that the figure y'all gave us was six oh one total units, at the end of the day, and, uh, again, I, I said that before, and you're looking at, at least a hundred, uh, that'd be twelve hundred vehicles that we're putting on Court Street or four fifteen, and I, you know, I, I think back in history, we all loved the bridge, and we all loved that one lane, and I'm no engineer by any means, I don't profess to be, but those guys that did that, or ladies, whatever, at that time, knew that in the future, you were gonna have more cars, not less, and it wasn't planned adequately, and there may be other reasons, and I think I know some other reasons why, but for myself, I think that needs to be addressed, the access and the potential of having this traffic, because we all know that the future of another bridge is probably ten years away at least, or even a connector, whatever it may be, and, huh...
It's not gonna be bust out safely.
No, and so, we have, and I, I, hey, I'm all for the rooftops, great, but at the flip side, I don't want to make a mistake, but the bridge...
I understand that's the last thing we'd want to do, too.
And so, and that's, that's my concern on the access and what it's gonna add to Court Street, unless the state or y'all, somebody has plans to widen that thing, which is fine, but, you know, we, I don't want to be up here ten years from now, and probably won't be here, but ten years from now, and you're gonna say, man, I wish we hadn't done that, and I, I don't know if you'd want to do that.
Well, when we started this project, we spent quite a bit of time down in DOTD, but they're the ones who govern and control all this flood traffic. Um, and they've required us to put in the two, those expensive entrances that ever put into a subdivision.
Two turn lanes?
Interests. Left turn, right turn, with middle lane, dedicated right turn, dedicated left turn lanes on Court Street, with the entire entrance, um, barbed. Well, I think when you, to, to be clear, when he says entire entrance, he's talking about where both streets will come out. Right. Of course, at this point, there's only one street tie-in, future development calls for a second driveway connection further to the east, about halfway between Westview Crossing Drive that's out there now and, and the three coming out, by half, mid, mid-project there'll be a second one, and DOTD's required us, when we finish the third phase of this, that we have to have the turn lane completed, so we, with DOTD's permission, and the conditional permit that they issued us, uh, the first filing only seventy-six cars, or seventy-six lots, arguing to a hundred and fifty-two cars, does not create enough impact on Court Street to warrant building the turn lanes, and the second filing, which is fifty, so fifty-four lots, I think, roughly the same thing, but when we complete the third phase, which will be a total of about a hundred and fifty lots, when we complete, uh, that work, and those lots are ready for sale, then we need to have the turn lane completed at that point. Now, all we can do is mitigate some of the impact, I mean, you've got a hundred and twenty thousand cars a day on I-ten, okay, and just from a traffic engineering standpoint, if you look at what ADT, average daily traffic, if it's a hundred and fifty-two cars, you take ten percent during the peak hour, because nobody cares about who's coming and going at two in the morning, everybody cares about what's happening in the morning, rush hour morning and rush hour evening, you have about a ten percent participation, so in this first phase of development, seventy-six lots, a hundred and fifty-two cars, ten percent, fifteen cars, so during the peak morning and the peak afternoon, you're only talking about fifteen cars additional in that out.
No, and I, I should've said, I'm not naive enough to believe they're gonna come and go at the same time.
Right, 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 and I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm just... You still kind of have the numbers crunch out.
You still have the potential, because you're gonna have the cars, and when y'all started this, I barely never noticed, and two of my sons live in subdivisions, same, same type, and I, I started looking at the vehicles, and most of them are outside, because, uh, everybody has their junk inside, in the garage, and, uh, it's, so I started looking at that aesthetically, and, you know, it, it just doesn't look good, but that's not another, my concern is the traffic, and eventually, you know, I, I understand what you're talking about, you graduated to that third point with that turn lane, I get that, but we still have to look down the line at the impact, and I know that all those cars on them come out and go in at the same time, and the turning lane is going to have the capacity of, how many cars, would you say, bumper lot?
Ultimately, it'll be enough for the entire six-hundred-lot subdivision. If you compare this to Sugar Mill, Sugar Mill has over two thousand left seats. They have a road lane group, they have a back entrance that's rarely used by anybody. They ought to end up, you're talking three times, I'm talking year, and I've never seen a full traffic lot, the whole time I was there. It does have an impact, anything is worse than what you have now, of course.
You, you got any, any amount of traffic, and we're gonna have more traffic.
Sure.
But you want to deal with it the best you can.
And I'll tell you one thing, that, uh, Amazon, they, traffic, we put out, well, it'd be a fraction of what that is.
I have a question, I'm, I'm thinking that when y'all brought that project to the, uh, parish council, if I'm not mistaken, you may say something about you gonna do a road connection where the back subdivision would be able to exit out of, um, Rosedale Road and Court Street?
We have a road going to the property line there, the property road that owns it's not owned by us, so it would have to be the gentleman who owns that property to connect or work with the city to finish it, but we don't own the property, and, uh, we will, we will, hence, if we'll put a street to the property line to go through it, but to take from the property line to the road till, it's, we don't have control.
That's correct.
Man, we're gonna leave like the sidewalks on, uh, on Court Street.
That's there with DOTD.
We'll just stay here. Is anybody advocating any, advocacy going on for, you know, some sidewalks?
No.
Because everybody's got their own panel.
DOTD does, does not want sidewalks in their right way, they don't want pedestrians in the right way.
And what about red lights or caution lights, would that be something that's installed by these three?
It might be in the future, at this point, based on, uh, the amount of traffic that's anticipated, they're, they're not warranted, and that's, that's the big term of DOTD is, is, in order to put any type of signalization on the state route, it has to be warranted, that's the terminology they use, and there's eleven different, uh, questions that have to be asked in order to warrant signaling, so, just based on the size of this subdivision and the amount of anticipated traffic, it's, it's not warranted.
Yes, I, I...
I'm not clear about the sidewalks, again, I, I don't think I got a clear understanding.
Well...
Saying that, we can't, we can't get sidewalks on Court Street, is that what?
Well, there is a plan at this particular time, and it's, it's in the planning stages with the MOP, that they are install sidewalks, but not that for the, on Court Street, they're supposed to start out, and they are going to, uh, LA one, but that's still in the planning stages.
And what if you want to...
They have one, they have one...
So, we have... There's certainly room for a sidewalk, but DOTD at, at every, every, every conversation we've had with them, this project and other projects that front state road, they discourage pedestrian traffic in state right way.
And would the, would the sidewalks be on just, uh, I guess, the south side of the street, uh, could, would that affect it if, uh, y'all just doing turn lanes on the north side of, of Court Street?
Well, our sidewalks go throughout the subdivision.
Throughout?
When we come up to the subdivision, they'll come up, the front, they'll be the parish, one sidewalk.
They tie in where the, uh...
They tie in the...
The border entrances. And, uh, so our, the, the, the additional turn lanes, that'll just be for the entry of the subdivision.
There'll be a, a dedicated center lane.
Right.
For a left turn, and there'll be a dedicated right turn lane for a right turn in, and a dedicated right going out.
Do you have the illustration that you have with that?
But, if, if I'm...
You have that drawn up?
No.
If I'm understanding that...
We just, we just got the requirements from the, not just, we've had them for several months, but we recently received their requirements, and we haven't, we hadn't really even started to design it, what we know is that the, uh, uh, the Court Street right away is a hundred and seventy feet wide, and there's an existing twenty-four-foot road in the middle of it, so we've got a lot of room adjacent to the existing roadway to construct the turn lanes, and, uh, we'll get through this first phase, and then hopefully a second phase, and then when the third phase starts up, then we'll begin the, uh, the design and construction of the turn lanes at that point, but if, uh, if only two filings end up being completed out on this project, there'll never be enough traffic to warrant the turn lanes.
Right.
And that's sort of a, the compromise that DOTD works with you, they'll say, we're not gonna make you build all this on the front end for one driveway, but if you get to this point, and your project's moving forward, and, and you're gonna have, you know, in excess of, uh, that'd be about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty lots, then you do have to build it at that point, and it was agreed to, there's a contract that's all signed and agreed between, uh, uh, Westview Crossing Development Group and Christian with the DOTD.
It sounds like to me, though, y'all just, if we were heading to the subdivision, now it'd be a turn lane to the right side, if we're leaving out the subdivision, turn lane to the right side, and expansion of the middle lane for the left hand side, coming back towards, whatever.
That would be the addition that's due at the third file.
Right, right, so, yeah, I'm, the south side of the street, the opposite side of the street that you guys could potentially be a sidewalk still, if that's a conversation that's being had, though, because you all would be, uh, I don't know how safe that'd be if, uh, you know, a car came out and just kept straight, but across the street from it, if there's no construction, what you are going on, that should be, uh, some space for a sidewalk to connect from four fifteen to LA one.
But that's the DOT question, they don't have any control.
That'd be a long cycle. Yeah, yeah, people walk, you know, they have a couple people...
We need one to go from LA one to four fifteen.
Yeah, some people, you know, they have some casualties of people walking back and forth, you know, unfortunately, so, it, it's you, because I don't, I'm not, I can't tell you could use it every day, but people can walk over there, and get to work for whatever case it may be.
Well, there's certainly adequate room for that, and, uh...
Yeah, but that would...
Right now, what I'm envisioning in terms of the turn lanes, is that the improvements will be built favoring the north side.
Right, right.
And the south side for a couple of reasons, number one is, there's a ton of driveways on the south side, and we'll only have two driveways on the north side, and, uh, uh, the church property, they've built a big parking lot out in the state right away, I don't know how they got away with that, but I guess they had higher powers, they got their permit approved, but, uh, uh, so, we're gonna try to favor our improvements on the north side and kind of leave the south side alone.
Right.
All right, if there's no other questions, anything else? All right, if there's no other questions, then hang on. I move. There are motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilwoman, um Gordon, any objections? You're in that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
No.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
On the grounds of my thoughts, Jim, we've had this conversation before, I both know, we just think eventually this will be too dense, but I mean, it's water under the bridge. Like a word?
Thank you. General item seven, consider introduction of a budget amendment in a general fund for roads and drainage capital out of Lake Lion Island for equipment to increase the amount of budgeted further purchase of two new hornbores by four thousand one hundred dollars from sixteen thousand dollars to twenty thousand one hundred dollars. I got to wait this first at the last committee meeting. And this is two hornbores that was purchased from uh Fort Allen Trail. I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilwoman Lacy, any objections? You're in that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Thank you. General item eight, consider introduction of a budget amendment in general fund, water, gas, and sewer fund in a total amount of five thousand one hundred dollars for purchase of an ice machine for use of all city of Fort Allen departments. Councilors is also discussing in committee meeting, the old ice machine that we had, the D P W born went out. We still waiting on port, uh we did purchase a new uh ice machine at the time. And that cost us fifty-one hundred dollars. I got a motion, motion by Councilwoman Lacy, second by Councilwoman Brown, any objections? You're in that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Thank you. General item nine, consider introduction of a resolution setting the mileage rates for the tax year twenty twenty-two for all properties subject to taxation within the city of Fort Allen in the following manner. General item one, seven point one zero zero miles, and police department, five point zero two zero miles.
Well, this is the same um resolution that we did last year. It's just that we have to do it every year, so nothing has changed on it.
Another. I mean, I would think property values have gone up. I don't know about the assessed values, but these bills should be entering a little bit more tons there than, you know, say, five years ago, the same.
It is a little bit, uh, we gave orders two years ago.
Yeah.
But uh, yeah, but the, the assessments of the last couple of years by the assessors on the tax is also fixed. I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilwoman Lacy, any objections? You're in that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. General item ten, official notification of interview process for applicants for position of Chief Financial Officer. Interviews will take place Thursday, August the eleventh of twenty twenty-two. And council, right now, we have four applicants. Uh, the interview was started tomorrow morning at nine thirty, and uh it should conclude by, by noon. And it's just, it's just a notification, it doesn't need to go.
Any, any local people there, or can you even say?
I think they all are local, uh, live inside the parish, maybe one, maybe not.
I think they'll make it tomorrow. Could you make it?
Yeah.
May I, you did a hand for the part-time position here?
Yes, ma'am, uh, we're, in fact, uh, we have two part-time. Where you coming tomorrow to uh, in that's what we is, the announcements. General item nine, uh, consider authorized six months probationary period step increase for the following employee, Tristan Dogan. He works in wastewater treatment plant from step grade one twelve B to step grade one twelve C. And council, I received a recommendation from uh the supervisor, uh, Mr. Phil Mo Brackford, in reference to uh his completion of his probationary period. I see that it was satisfactory, so. Requesting a one-step increase.
And I, I wanna congratulate, even though he's not here, congratulate Tristan on successfully achieving his uh class-two certification. That's great to see our employees succeeding.
Second, I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilwoman Brown, any objections? You're in that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon? Ms. Staines? Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
General.
I got it already.
I got it, but it's taking a while, it's staying on the map. I do, but we need to explain why. Yes.
Well, just so, yeah, just so it's on the record, uh, Council, Councilwoman Gordon is a pain uh because that particular employee is a relative.
All right, General item twelve, consider authorized six months probationary period step increase for the following employee, uh Darren West, uh watering gas uh from step one oh nine A to step one oh nine B. And Mr. West work under uh Mr. Landry, Darren Landry. And Mr. Landry has requested a one-step increase and says that he has concess, successfully completed his probationary period after getting his uh cause he's, he's a a commander.
His supervisor requests his increase?
Yeah, cause he, he, he's, he's still a, a trainee, so he hasn't reached his classification. As far as his, his first six months employment with the city of Fort Allen, it, it is completed as successful, so he's entitled to a one-step increase as a trainee in the water mess.
Who's the supervisor?
Aaron Landry. Motion by, motion by Councilwoman Brown, second by Councilwoman Gordon, any objections? You're in that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
General item thirteen, consider authorized six months probationary period step increase for the following employee, and that's, that's Eric Jackson, works in roads and drainage. And he be moving from step grade one-on-one E to one-on-one F. Mr. Jackson uh has been working with uh Darrell Lewis has taken uh the role as Mr. Bass is off on, on, on medical leave. And Mr. Jackson has successfully completed his six-month probation after being hired, working in the roads and drainage department as a, as a as a, and we.
So his supervisor sign off on him also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So Mike, in this, in this particular situation, Mr. Bruce have to sign off on him, or, or then that uh Mr.?
And Lewis is acting, he, he does the side of all.
Mr. Lewis does sign off, but Mr. Bass has been off for six months.
Mr. Brown, good. I'm certain. I'm certain.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman uh Brown, second by Councilwoman Gordon, any objections? You're in that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
General item fourteen, uh, comments to proceed?
This is Tom.
Thank you. General item fifteen, alcoholic others from this.
We have one from J juice, incorporated trade name Ken M seven-five, authentic Xander, high and low alcoholic content at retail. Uh, sure, any other?
Yeah, the actual permit I know was, was done. Um, they had to go back a couple of times, cause the names weren't coinciding together. So they finally fixed that, it's where the O'Pon shop used to be, but they have to sign out now. Um, so I, he has the permit um to bring to you all before he signs it. Um, but it is completed. Um, I did speak to the lady last week, so she did have everything that she needed. She got the names corrected at the state and brought the correct documentation back.
Uh, Jerry, are they connected with the people that run it quick and handy? Are they two different?
They're two different.
Okay.
I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown, any objections? You're in that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
We have the rooftops coming up, we have these liquor stores. What we do, we do some grocery stores and some restaurants. We need to uh bring in some businesses, we're trying. Forty-five people.
And you're in that.
We have a restaurant that's interested in looking for that sort of policy move from that move. So, and we got another brick, we just, we're applying to the United States. The restaurant like at Cool Street. And the lunch house.
Lunch box. Lunch box. Right next to uh Papa Grove Church.
We had problems with the process for that, so that's called it. Even a meat market,罗，even we could look at the front for a, a meat market. We, I mean, we gotta have options.
You bringing out these subdivision, men have stuff. Cause ladies out of county shopping, huh?
All right, let's go to General item sixteen, announcements and correspondence. The only announcement I have is that we are, we did hire two part-time workers in the roads and drainage that are gonna assist with, if y'all notice, the grass is extremely high. Uh, we did lose uh Jimmy Bege in roads and drainage, so I had to move one guy from the grass cutting crew to replace Mr. Bege. So we gonna hire these two other uh part-time people to the interview center. And that's gonna be Mr. Larry Hayes and Mr. Dwayne Jodel. Mr. Dwayne Jodel was one of our student workers, and we gonna bring him in and give him another opportunity. And maybe one of these two will build in the uh full-time position that we will have built uh at a later part of the year.
And when they cut in the grass, cut the grass, they are on.
Yeah, last year, we always hired, I used to bring people in at the end of the year to help out with the, the high grass, the way grass is grown and trying to maintain. Cause uh right now, L A one, you really gotta cut at least twice a week to keep it down. And it's been rough with the rain, cause uh you cannot with those zero turnbonds with the grass.
Man, um, when we gonna start interviewing for a junior position? You have many applicants to apply for?
Uh, right now, uh, I did temporarily fill it with a, a in-house person, I wanna see how that works. And then uh if he takes that position, then uh we gonna fill a position that he vacate.
Can we ask for the in-house person?
Right now? Yes, uh, Mr. uh Richardson. He, he went out, yeah, Kurt Richardson, he was one of our heavy operators of uh mores and trucks.
Okay, so, can, we, we will be looking forward to the same situation with Darren, and we probably, we have to give him a, a pay increase, you know, we have to uh.
No, he's not acting as supervisor.
Paid, done that.
Not right now.
So, and when he took, when he started?
He's temporarily, I mean, he's just temporarily right now, and, and uh he's just learning, you know, the duties. And we're gonna evaluate from there, and then we're gonna.
You wanna step up?
Going.
You know, sometimes they don't wanna, they afraid to take their position, you know, more responsibility.
Yeah, but he submitted a, a letter, uh.
Well, that's good, that's good.
Anything else? It's still beginning?
No. School's back in?
Yes, school's back in, uh, in fact, uh, we, we build the tree trimming. Uh, we usually do it at this time of year, and Mr. Weed Care, Tree Care, care for lowest period, and he's at this, today, he's getting out uh from the trees for, that, that's our load for that facility, so. We're just hoping for a good year, and in fact, today, uh, if y'all watch Channel Nine News, Fort Allen was showcased, and the kids stayed overnight, and yeah, did their time. And we're looking forward to a good football season and basketball season.
And man, what's that, what's going on on the Fourteenth Street?
That's the search for the.
I mean, just for people who may not know. Cause I can't tie this play.
The Fourteenth Street, it, it is right now.
They don't wanna go around, like.
We were connecting the sewer line for the, the restroom.
Yeah, I don't have the same.
And that's the main line, and, and.
We didn't have to cut it off so far.
It's supposed to be extended all the way out to, to Twelfth Street, so. Uh, hopefully, we finally got that project underway, and hopefully we can get that, that restroom completed and finished and, and usable. But we had a couple of things we have to complete in that, that uh corn park area that we discussed in the near future. Huh?
Yes.
General item?
I, I have a question. Uh, um, um, I had two different um answers, I just wanna see which one is the correct one. With the watering land there, I did the extension on the past due, cause we had a gas issue, they don't know still whether it's a city or whether it's, we all knew how to water it. But we had one since Friday, so I got the extension on the past due, which was the one-twenty-three. And I was told one of my亲戚, and I know what it is, um, that I was till the twenty-fourth. And the new bill, I do until the twenty-sixth. And I was told that, um, I had to pay the new bill also on twenty-fourth. But I know the new bill, I don't have to pay that, even if it's June twenty-sixth, you have until the tenth of September before they can do anything. But someone told me that's not true, they said they do it to me only, I don't know why. So what is the correct answer?
What are you saying, that they asking you to pay your past due and your new bill on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
And council, that is correct. Anytime you fill out extension, uh, and you're, you're late on your, your past month bill, you have to pay both bills by the, uh, in order to receive that extension. Uh, we have been doing it as a courtesy and allowing them just to pay the past due. But then you only get three extensions, and when you get to that point, then you know, we have to change the policy that, well, not to change the policy, but we have to make the customer pay for the full amount.
So are they aware there when when uh they come in for the extension?
It's on the extension form that they they that we give. That you, when you get the extension, you're supposed to pay the full amount of your bill, including the
The new bill.
The one coming up on the twenty-sixth.
So you get an extension for your past due?
For your past due, so that you don't get cut off. But you got, but you got another bill coming up on the twenty-sixth.
Did the feet the purpose of getting an extension?
I know.
Well, no, it doesn't because now you're not getting cut off. You have the purpose of the extension, so it prevents you from getting cut off, cause otherwise you'd be cut off on the tenth or fifteenth. And the next bill isn't due until the twenty-sixth, so.
But if they pay the past due bill and the other bills do the same and they got that tenth grace period for the new bill, which would be like the tenth one, so why would you combine it both? I mean, I'm confused. I know you said the extension that make you, that I have to pay for, but I mean.
And I was suddenly just thought it this month.
Because we gave you an extension.
I just wanted to explain it to you.
Because we gave you an extension from the past month and now you asked for another extension from the next one.
Oh, just to ask for another extension, okay, okay. But they only can allow, you say, three?
Three extensions and a lot of times, everything goes over. Right, not for the year.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no. A lifetime, come on, man.
Well, they, not council, we try to work with all the all our customers and and.
You understand what he's saying?
Yes, that's something.
That wasn't explained to you?
Yeah, he never, he just did that this time. It was never, that was never done before.
But that mean they would be encouraging to you and extend it and longer for you, so uh like they say, your blessing come and it blessedly.
And then, you know, when Ms. Carolyn disrespected, because I said I talked to someone, she said a bad word to me today. And they don't know how to report and all that.
Well, we can't defend what Ms. Carolyn say, but um I I just can't see that being done, but who knows? But if if that did happen, we as board member, we apologize, but um like I said, she's not here to defend herself, so we not gonna example it on it.
Alright. Alright, is anything else? We go into nine and seventeen? I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Gordon.